I had a great meeting with L.L. Bean today.
Have they found a replacement for?
So they're not going to replace him. So instead, it's more of a... Yeah, that's my report. Thank you.
I thought it might be. And do we need to lay down in front of your office? I wasn't sure because everything got shut down.
I put, I, so here's the thing. When I'm ready to walk out when the council is, I have somebody that walks at least halfway. When I have to go do all my stuff, I end up walking down by myself.
Okay, then I'll make sure everything is shut down.
Sorry.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Yeah, so they're not replacing Dave.
I mean, that's what I've been, I have, the machine lost control. The whole bucket full.
Hi, Mary folks. Okay, Tom.
Are you sure where that map is real quick?
Yeah, I love that.
If you hit the dash right there.
To make it small.
That will make the zoom go into a little tiny box. And it's our district voting map right there.
Thank you for this, by the way.
You are welcome. Over here to, oh, you can hide that guy.
Like that?
Yeah. That's the dash you want to hit right there. And then if you want to zoom in and zoom out, it's running in Acrobat. There is a plus or minus down here. And if you want to go up and down, it's that bar right there.
Nice. Nice, nice, nice.
And you didn't have anything else to show?
Nope. That should be it.
Yep, and to get back.
We click on the lap piece.
That guy right there? There you go.
Nice. You make it easy. Thank you.
I don't think we have anybody down here, but I'm set up in case.
Because you never know? Is that, is that what you're telling me? Is you never know?
Never know. I'm ready.
Thank you for having us all ready to go. Plenty of time. I appreciate it.
So we need to, we need to address article amending the membership.
Yep.
Before we appoint the members to the.
And they, that's on consent or is that not?
It's on consent. So can we say just contingent upon passage of article?
No, I would simply, at the beginning of consent, pull item 25.
25, see?
Yeah, can we just pull that off? Have discussion under new business after, at the, after the Hunter Road Fields? Would that work?
All right, so we're just going to pull up 25, see?
Okay.
And pull off.
Or you can have it go. Go all the way to the other one. If it doesn't pass, then go back and amend, reopen that article. Whichever you would want. I would think just pulling it off would be easier.
Okay.
I think you, I think you could just say. I just, yeah, it's at the end of new business.
Are we expecting anybody up here tonight? Anybody remote?
I am not expecting anybody. Chris? Tom would like to know if in your discussion, you're going to go up to the map. Yes.
Jester for District and Hunter Road Fields.
Okay, I'm going to give you the stick mic.
We had a great, we had a productive meeting with Melanie Sacks about the upcoming, about the current legislative.
Sure.
You know, just, I would just focus on the happy discussion of municipal bills from the upper up in Augusta. There's, it's either tomorrow or Thursday. I have, I think it's tomorrow. I have a meeting with Amy to talk about, among other things, private cemetery.
Oh, good.
I will just tell you that that is a bit expensive. Because you're taking, if it's a taking family. So, but we'll have to walk you through it. What the steps are. I'll have something there. Yeah, that's right. And my person couldn't be here for the louden of the day that we picked and he's going out of state. So I got him to agree to do it in four days. I said five, so he was waving the sergeant. So we're doing that Friday here. So just so you know.
If you see my car, you don't want to stop in on Friday. For you, absolutely.
Do you want to wait till everybody's here?
Um. So it's six, so are we waiting past the time?
We tend to a couple minutes.
Okay.
So I just, I can put a step with no sound. People know that we're.
Okay, so I'll start the webinar.
Yeah, and it'll be quiet. It'll be silent.
And, oh, wait. Tom, can you just?
COVID was negative the whole time.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if I'm getting it from you, then my kids aren't getting their drugs. We've, I mean, it's been like everything.
Yeah.
So I'm not sweating. I appreciate you wearing a mask, though. Sorry, nothing.
It's not that bad. It's just feels like my head weighs about 45 pounds. Or 145 pounds, I should say.
All right, we will get started. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. This is Town Council Meeting 06-25. It is 6:04 PM. We are at 30 Main Street in Freeport, Maine. Our first order is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving along to roll call. See who's here. Counselor Egan.
Here.
Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Pilch.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Counselor Benoit is present. Counselor Lawrence is excused. Our next order is to waive the reading and accept as printed the March 4th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to note that I'm pleased that the clerk found our Citizen of the Year proclamation entertaining. I don't know if it was the reading or the words, but if it was the reading, it was me. If it was the words, it was not me.
All right, any other discussion or comments? Thank you, Counselor Brown, for doing a thorough job reading and catching all of our titles. Appreciate it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Oh, I have announcements. That's how that works. All right. The Town Council invites you to the Comprehensive Plan Public Forum on Wednesday, March 19th. That's tomorrow. From 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Meeting House Arts. This is your chance to review and discuss the draft comprehensive plan, which is a strategic framework that will guide Freeport's growth and development. The event will feature conversation focusing on the draft vision, future land use map, and policy recommendations. North Star Planning will facilitate the discussion, but the spotlight is on the community's ideas and feedback. Your voice matters in shaping Freeport's future. Let's build a vibrant, thriving community together. Hey, Chip. Attention drivers, as the weather warms up, our roads are becoming busier with cyclists and pedestrians out enjoying the sunshine. Maybe not this week. Well, it's beautiful today. Yesterday, not so much. We want to remind everyone to slow down and pay extra attention to new traffic patterns in place in Freeport. And remember, those on two wheels or two feet have just as much right to the road as those on four wheels. Let's share the road responsibly and make sure everyone gets to their destination safely. I am pleased to announce that our town has been... Do you want to talk about this? Just kidding. More news on that later. Before you grab that sledgehammer and start planning your dream gazebo, remember to contact our codes office. Whether you're constructing new, constructing new, renovating, demolishing, or working on shoreline stabilization, erosion control, or fill projects, it's crucial to get the green light from our team. When in doubt, give codes a shout. Friendly reminder that April 1st is the deadline for making any changes to your property evaluation, ownership, and tax exemptions for the FY '26 tax year. If you have any questions or concern, please reach out to our assessing officer. Exciting news. April 1st, the online system will be open to reserved camping lots at Winslow Park. The spots are available on a first-come, first-served basis and tend to fill up fast, so mark your calendars. Any other announcements? Go for it.
The town of Freeport is offering a six-week Civics 101 program. And I've attended the first two, and they are really great. They're designed to educate participants about local government and foster community connections. It's held generally here. Last night was at the library. But generally, it's held here from 6:00 to 8:00, from March 10th through the 14th. It's, yeah, 6:00 to 8:00, yep. So it's a worthy program.
Yes.
With great speakers.
Thank you for reminding me. I wanted to mention that the first week, Sophie, Chris, and I had the pleasure of presenting, and it was a lot of fun. And, Chris, I don't think I've ever seen anyone more passionate about their job. So thank you. That was a delight to hear you present. I think that registrations are closed for this cycle, but I'm hoping that Peter Wagner with RSU5, I think it's going really well from what I've heard. So I think we'll, we'll see it happen again. Any other announcements? All right. Information exchange. We will start with town councillors and move on to some committee updates. Do we have any information exchange on committee meetings, community conversations? Anything of the sort?
I do want to sign for committees.
Okay. Dan?
Just note, there's been some emails going around about the potential skate park that's being proposed for the parking lot near the train station. So I just want to let people know that that's out there. I think Municipal Facilities is probably hearing it. You have probably an update. I just want to acknowledge the email that went around to us from the nearby neighborhood group at Hummingbird Lane. So I didn't want to respond too much in the email thread. I wanted to do it publicly. I'm going to meet with them on, I believe it's this coming Monday, just to kind of listen more to their concerns, fill them about the process of that and the chances they'll have for input during public hearings and things like that. In the works.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, do you want to talk about yours?
So, yeah, similarly, Municipal Facilities Committee met last Monday. Most of what we talked about were staff updates, and a lot of those are included in our capital budget conversations as well that we had last week that we'll have more of this week. But the primary item on the agenda was the request that was coming forward from the group that we've all met with before, who have been working diligently for years to find a location for a permanent skate park. And their, their longtime priority has been to find a place downtown that is particularly walkable from all of the schools. And so the, you all may recall, they were last before the whole council last year when they had a pretty detailed proposal to locate the skate park at Leon Gorman Park. And that, after input from other stakeholders, particularly Freeport Sewer District, they concluded that that was not viable because of the sewer lines that run underneath where their, their particular proposal was. So they were back at Municipal Facilities with the proposal to put this permanent skate park where the seasonal skate park has been for the last few years. There were quite a lot of folks here in the chamber in support of that proposal. We also got a number of emails there. And we had a thorough staff report from the manager as well in terms of what the, the status of that parking lot is that is ostensibly the town-owned train station parking lot. We, the committee did not take any action on that. We asked quite a few questions, and the group is going to be back in front of us with some additional information that we requested from them. So they'll come back to Municipal Facilities, I assume, next month when we finalize that agenda. We also asked the manager to be in consultation with some other staff, particularly Brett, in terms of how that could impact anything related to the transit-oriented development work that he's already working on. And the manager is going to be in touch with the New England Passenger Rail Authority to get some information about what kind of impact that would have on the train station, if they have any concerns, as well as talking with them about what their long-term plans might be for that train station, because we would anticipate at some point some expansion of facilities rather than just having that open platform. But we don't really know what that timeline is, so that'll be a continuing conversation. So to reiterate what Counselor Pilch said, we have had other communications from neighbors who've expressed concern about that placement. So I just want to reiterate that the, the committee still has a lot of work to do before that comes back to the full council. But there will be a lot of opportunity for continued public input as we continue that process.
Anything else? Any questions on the skate park? All right, we will move on to committee updates. We have two formal ones, or more formal ones, tonight. We'll start with the Housing Committee. Counselor Egan?
Thank you. Last month, I presented a list of some specific recommendations that were derived from the work of the Housing Committee in their research and investigations and discussions. And so the list that's in front of you, and there's a copy on the back table if anybody's looking for it here in the room, is a little bit of a further elaboration of those recommendations with a little bit more detail, a little bit more specificity. We're not taking any action on this tonight. I want to make that clear. There's no action on these recommendations. This is simply to put this in front of you for understanding some specific language that eventually might come to an action item. I wanted to, or the committee wanted to get these in front of you before the Comp Plan Workshop tomorrow, so that, to the degree that there are elements in the Comp Plan proceedings that might address some of these issues, we'll have some foundation of where the Housing Committee is coming from. That is just the Housing Committee. That's not the council's perspective. So I just wanted to stress that. And then essentially, you know, socializing or bringing up these ideas to get them in conversation. And the focus really is to have this be, not so much an outline, but at least a preamble to our planned workshop on April 8th, council workshop, which will be dealing with, among other things, housing issues and potential changes that we might institute or at least talk about. So I'm not going to read the whole thing tonight, but I just want to highlight two. Number three and number six, because we've been talking about them for quite a while. Number three on the list is, within what is now determined to be the Dogbone District, which is not really exactly following a downtown zoning lines, but is essentially the core of economic vitality in downtown Freeport, is to reduce the minimum lot area per dwelling unit to zero, so that if there is a site that can handle housing and is permitted, that whatever the maximum amount is that can be built on that site, recognizing wetlands, slopes, setbacks, easements, et cetera, so that we don't artificially limit the amount of units that can be put onto a particular property if it otherwise could handle it physically. So that's a way to encourage some density and not have projects be artificially 16 units when they could be 20. And then number six, which will probably bring some additional conversation, is to really take a look at, in the Section 602 of our ordinance, to really formalize a little bit more transparently for applicants coming forward, that they have an expectation that once an application is complete, and we can talk about how we can get to that, because I know that the staff sees this wide array of applicants come in. But if we can get to the point where we can deem the application complete, that the applicant then is given a relatively clear timeframe and an expectation that that plan will be in front of various department heads that have to make a ruling on it. And then there's a follow-up meeting. And then, once that feedback is heard, the project then sort of has its own momentum and its own propulsion. So it eliminates the, well, did I, did I make the threshold this meeting? Or do I need to make it next meeting? Or do I need to make it next meeting? And it puts sort of a little bit more of accountability on both sides, for the applicant as well as the town staff. So that will require some finesse. But there are plenty of examples of this and plenty of models for it. Not to mention that it's directly in the Roadmap for Future Production, which is a State of Maine report. So that's exactly where the language came from. So I just wanted to highlight those two things. Those are priority issues for the Housing Committee. And again, this is just to bring up these ideas, get people thinking about them. We can have in the context for our Comp Plan meeting tomorrow night, assuming everybody can make that. And then it'll be much more specific focus on the April 8th workshop.
Thank you for keeping this front and center, John. It's really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks to Brett for helping me with the wordsmithing here.
It's not in here, but thank you, Brett. Any questions or thoughts for John? Folks from the committee will be there tomorrow.
We're hoping as many can as possible.
All right. Moving along, we have an update from FEDC.
Thank you. First, I, I am not by my sidekick tonight. Our dear Mary has suffered a very personal loss in her family, so she wasn't able to be with us tonight, although I actually had to convince her not to be here because about 11 o'clock this afternoon, I could see her preparing a slide deck to, to present to you, and I called her immediately and said, "Mary, you don't have to do this tonight." So, so Mary is home getting some rest. So thankfully, she'll be with me next time. And secondly, thank you for this opportunity to present to you. There's so much enthusiasm and excitement in Freeport right now from your updates, I'm hearing as well. FEDC is also just becoming more and more energetic, and we're happy to announce that we actually have three incredible candidates that are abiding to join our board. And they are, one lawyer, who's a resident here in town, and then two local business owners and property owners in town. So we hope to vote them in in our next meeting, and I think that they'll be incredible additions to our board. And then, so speaking of real estate, I just wanted to bring to your attention that 35 Main Street actually went on the market. There was no big sign for you to notice, so unless you're really digging, you might not have. But I wanted to let you know that 35 Main Street is actually now under contract. It was formerly owned by Linda Bean, which was great. With her passing, the, the estate decided to sell that piece of property. And I'm very pleased to tell you that it actually is going to a local business owner who is very invested in Freeport and Freeport's future. It was actually because of his enthusiasm towards Freeport's future that he chose this particular property. So big deal and a big win for Freeport. And as a tenant in that building, I mentioned to you last time that Passive House will be going in the remitted space between Gap and American Eagle. They are very excited to open their doors to you, but there has been a slight delay. So just wanted to let you know. They are still coming, but they're having trouble, and you're not going to be surprised getting an HVAC worker into their space. So for that reason alone, it's slightly delayed, but they wanted you to know that they're still very excited to open their doors. Also, a new tenant that you have seen and who's going to be a wonderful addition to Freeport is Liberty Graphics on Mill Street. They are incredible. I've never had a business, I mean, I'm always excited to welcome businesses to town, but this one in particular came to me to say, "How can we get involved? How can our philanthropy department get involved in the community?" And, and, you know, so before even opening their doors, they're very, seeming to be a very caring and generous partner to welcome into Freeport. This will be their fourth location. They've been trying for a long time to find a space in Freeport and have landed on Mill Street. So I'm really excited to welcome them. I'm meeting with them again later this week. But what a, what a great company to, to welcome into town. And then L.L. Bean, oh my goodness. Such a, such an exciting time in Freeport. They are, as you can see, demolition is actually almost at an end. We have a privilege of being able to speak with them at several different meetings. And I think that that's a really good thing, because I think psychologically, seeing a building torn down isn't nearly as uplifting as seeing a building being, going up and being constructed. And so you will see that the debris and the demolishing of, of their older campus is almost done. That's going to be cleaned up, and you're going to start to see the excitement of the building to what will be to be going up, which is great for Freeport. And again, we're so thankful that L.L. Bean made this investment into Freeport, but it can't come without construction. And some of that construction is going to have an impact on business. And so I just want us to be prepared that over the next two summers, really, we will be without the impact that Freeport, L.L. Bean gives us. You know, concerts that typically bring 8,000 people, you know, the reindeer, the movie nights, the yoga, you name it. All of these things you can visibly see have a huge impact on downtown Freeport. And all of the neighboring businesses certainly benefit from that. So I have heard from businesses that they are a bit concerned. Naturally, there's nothing L.L. Bean can do about this. They're still doing everything they can with the space that they have. But, but notably, it will be at a lesser degree than we've seen historically. So this is the time, more than ever, for us to do as much as we can to promote Freeport, to support events, to come together. An example of this, I'm working with Caroline through the street gang and L.L. Bean in the town to try to make sure that we still have fireworks the Fourth of July traditions that people are used to coming to Freeport for. We don't want to break those traditions while we're under construction. So again, we'll be meeting with the street gang next week to identify ways in which we care, can locally, you know, fill some of those gaps while L.L. Bean is, is under construction. So on a positive note as well, you heard me last time update you on some of the vacancies that were, that have been filled. One of those I just mentioned, Passive House, Mother Tree, which is a vintage shop in town, which is fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to go, please stop in there and visit. And then you will also see on 42 Main Street, we have a professional boot fitter coming to town, to town, which is cool and old-fashioned sounding, but he actually, I'll just give you a little snippet about how cool he is. On Super Bowl Sunday, he actually wasn't in town because the Eagles are his client. So he was actually at the Super Bowl Sunday, making sure that all their boots and cleats and so forth fit just right, and I guess it worked out pretty well for them. So we'll be seeing him coming and opening his doors and a little bit later in the spring. But the energy doesn't stop there. I've had the privilege of showing some spaces in Freeport, and I'm very close to being able to announce some more vacancies that will be filled. Again, we've got this great partnership with all of the landowners of these properties, and just, I guess, from the business part, there's such an enthusiasm in Freeport's future. So those spaces will be the ATM space, which is next to Linda Bean's topside tavern. It's a very small space, but, you know, incredible location. So that will be one that I hopefully will be able to report to you on next time I'm here. Also, probably my favorite building in town, certainly my favorite vacant building in town right now is the Mallett Building, and we're, again, very close to getting two users for that space that I think will be great additions to town. I actually just left, just right before this meeting, I showed the Hose House, which formerly was where the train station was. It's locally owned by a former counselor of ours, and I've showed that space just now, I've showed it a couple times, but I do feel a great amount of enthusiasm from the user that was just there, and again, would be a great year-round, wonderful use. In addition, Village Station, there's a smaller space up there that we're close to, not as close, but also exciting. I have shown the movie theater a couple of times. I know that that's a personal, local favorite, so would love to get that filled. We're going at it kind of from two different angles. One would be from a national user, which the Wilder Group is targeting, and then I've shown it to two users that would have more of a local flair to a movie theater, but I think would take either one, right? So that's what we've been up to. Oh, actually, one more thing. This didn't even get to make my paper because it came in so late. This is actually a compliment to Brett and Sophia. I set up an initial lunch and learn 2024 with United Way Child Care Facility to open an organization here in Freeport, a very large childcare facility, and really, that was my involvement, was having a lunch and learn and kind of queuing that up. But Sophia and Brett took it to the next level and applied for an extremely generous grant, which they just got notification this afternoon, that they received that enormous grant, which will be sufficient enough to, I feel like, see this childcare facility actually get to open its doors on Route 1 in Freeport, which will make a huge difference for our residents, so residents, our visitors in the business community. So really fantastic things. I'm so proud to be able to do this work and to report back to you, but we are heading in the right direction, Freeport. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go for it.
I just want to say thanks, Toni. We've had, you know, conversations in the past, let's say, 15 months or so about increasing visibility of FEDC, both in town and also in this chamber, and, you know, these reports that you and Mary have been doing have been exactly what I think people have been asking for, so I just want to thank you for that. And it gives currency to what FEDC and the chamber are doing for our downtown, and we need all the fans in our fan club that we can muster, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And please let Mary know we're thinking of her.
Thank you.
I'm really excited about Liberty Graphics. I'm a little nervous, I will spend way too much money there, but thank you for your work, and I'm really excited about everything that's happening.
Yes.
Moving on is the Town Manager's Report. Sophie.
Yeah, just a few things. First is just to confirm that staff is meeting with NEPRA about the train platform later this week. If there's information that would be pertinent to the Municipal Facilities Committee, we'll invite them to that meeting as well. It's kind of the idea. I also, I understand that I caused some confusion when I sent out all of the calendar invites on Saturday morning. I apologize for the confusion, but hopefully it will keep people, and the idea with that is if it doesn't pertain to you, feel free to decline it. Just wanted to make sure everybody had the same information. And when you see things come out from Carrie, that's actually, she created the calendar, it could be anybody doing it, so feel free to just let me know if we freak you out again. Also, just wanted to give you an update. As councilors are aware, Dave Lockman retired from LL Bean. He was kind of our primary contact, point of contact. This afternoon, Caroline and I met with two individuals that the company is kind of temporarily putting in place to ensure that we have continuity of the check-in meetings that we've been having, and we have a direct connection into the C-suite, so that's important. So going well, we haven't been forgotten. Hopefully, it will just be business as usual, which would be great. Also, just want to bring people's attention, following up on Toni's remarks about the incredible things that are happening in Freeport. If you look on the front page of the website, there is a link to Freeport Growing Together, and that will take you to a video that highlights AEC, which is our local engineering company. Tom and Brett, Pete, our communications person, all worked together to kind of pull that off. And if I do say so myself, I think it was pretty great. It's the first of many in a series, so the hope is that we will feature a business every month with that. And then I really want to take the rest of my time to talk a little bit about change to the state's energy code and how that might impact us and figure out what council might want to, how you might want to refer that on. So on April 1st, the town will be required to enforce the new Building and Energy Code. Prior to my arrival here, the town adopted the Stretch Energy Code, which is currently the 2021 amended International Energy Code, unamended. The new energy code for the state will be the 2021 IECC with some amendments. So we adopted it without amendment, now they're going to adopt it with some amendments. If the town wishes to continue with the Stretch Code, it will be the one that the state just adopted. And here is the amendment. The 2021 Stretch Code is created to lower energy consumption in both commercial and residential projects compared to the 2021 IECC, which is what we had initially adopted. For commercial projects, this means that the total UA for a project is calculated in, the calculation is outlined in C402.1.5, but the key piece here is that it has to exceed the UA requirements by at least 15% over a code-compliant project. So this means if the envelope passes design by 15% better or more than the code, per the COM CHECK compliance calculation. So right now, we have a level that people have to meet. With the amendment that the state has put in, they now have to meet 15% more than that. Residential projects, it again has the 15% more compliance, but also says that if they're not using fossil fuels for any use, heating, cooling, hot water, backup heat, cooking, et cetera, it can drop that additional requirement from 15% to 10%. So as explained by Nick, if we do nothing, everybody's going to have to meet that higher energy efficiency, that 15% more. And if we want to do anything different, we would have to go back through and amend our code. So the question I have for the committee is, do you want to send this through for the ordinance committee? How do we want to tackle this? Or is everybody just fine with 15% more? Yes.
The 15% is over our existing Stretch Code?
Yes.
Which was beyond the 2021 Move Back Code when we passed it.
Yes. So the way that Nick described it to me, because I am definitely not the expert, I'm just the messenger, Nick described it that when the 2021 Stretch Code was adopted, it was adopted in anticipation of the adoption, this adoption, by the state. When the state adopted the 2021 IECC code as the new Stretch Code, they amended it with the "do better" element in it.
Wow. We were a little bit hoodwinked there. We thought we were pushing ahead and waiting for the state to catch up to us, and now the state codes jumped in front of us.
We pushed ahead and we waited, and then they wanted to do better.
Right. Okay. It's going to require a lot of communication, that's all.
So is this standard for new work?
Yes.
And, I mean, there's certain details I'd love to find.
So I think the key here is if, because if the goal is, yeah, we're fine with 15% more, right, then staff would move through the process of educating, trying to educate the community about it. If you really want to dig into this to figure out what it means, we really need Nick at the table for that, and the best, I think the best place for that would likely be ordinance committee. I just want to make sure this wasn't the intent all along, which John just told me it wasn't, to go ahead further. So if it sounds like people would like this to go to ordinance, does that?
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
I noticed the ordinance committee people, one is doing this, and the other one's like...
But at the end of the day, though, right, currently, any new building would have, would, the way we structured the ordinance, they'd be aligned to the new state-adopted code. So for all intents and purposes, we've got the new code adopted as the state adopted it, and we'd be talking about potentially rolling it back.
Yeah, yeah. So what Nick told me is that normally, when they roll in a new code like this, municipalities usually have 90 to 120 days where they're saying, you know, before this got adopted and rolled in, there were things in process, being designed, being, so a lot of time, there's a pause on enforcement of it. I think it would be important, if you wanted to move forward and learn more about this, that we schedule a time at your April meeting with Nick.
My question is, does the whole council want to hear about it? I'm happy to do it at ordinance, because I'm going to sit down either way, but it's important enough for the council to listen to.
Yeah, I think I personally would like to hear an update after the ordinance committee discusses it.
Sure. But you're comfortable doing it at ordinance rather than having Nick come here and present to the council?
Yeah. I personally am, but I don't want to speak for the rest of council.
Do you still want Nick to come? What Dan's saying is important. I mean, my opinion is that we do need to do our due diligence on this and understand it before we make a decision, one way or the other, and I think ordinance makes sense, but at the same time, we're going to be stuck having this exact same discussion again, so how do we want to do it, do we want to do it twice or once?
I do think that Nick is going to have to answer council's questions regardless, so I don't know what the most efficient way to do that is.
So how about, would it make sense if I asked Nick if he could please be here on April 1st, which is your next council meeting? You could talk about it, and if you needed more from there, we could then do something in ordinance. Does that work? Good? Okay.
So ordinance is after April 1st?
Yep. But that also gets it kind of, has that discussion happen a little bit sooner?
I think you'll probably do this, but is there background information you'll give out with that?
Yes, we will, we will give you the code and Nick's wonderful memos, which you'll get your highlighter out for.
Anything else? Okay. Any questions for Sophie? All right. We will move on to public comment, part one. So this is limited to folks who are here in person and limited to comments on items that are not on the agenda. If you speak, we ask that you keep it to three minutes and let us know who you are. Is anybody speaking today?
Good evening. It's Jay Yilmaz. How's everybody doing? I was here about a month ago, and a few councilors were not here, and I just wanted to follow up on making sure that it was still on the radar, the suggestion I made about providing funding for the Earl's Department to hire another person and for other reasons, but importantly, most importantly, to help clear the sidewalks. I just wanted to get some feedback on that, how the process works. I didn't want to be like Andy Dufresne, writing letters from Shawshank Prison every time, every week for a year. I just didn't know how it went, so I was just curious.
We did discuss it in workshop last week. There's, as you can imagine, a lot of threads to pull on this one, so there's definitely discussion of if we have the manpower or the budgetary ability. I don't know if anybody else wants to add their thoughts on that conversation.
Yeah, I don't think, speaking out of turn to say, a number of us, we're advocating for what made sense, and there might be a nice hybrid solution, where if he's plowing this section of sidewalk and that section of sidewalk, that maybe he doesn't need to skip over the piece in the middle. So if there's areas where it's easy for him to kind of add it to his route, we're encouraging him to do that.
From top to bottom, Earl, I didn't get a sense that he was opposed to it.
Oh, definitely not.
And what was interesting in the conversation I had with him was that he was kind of saying, almost, I don't want to put worse, almost, "I'd love to do it," and the reason why was because I'd have another person, and he desperately needs more people. That would tie in with allowing him to have more help at the transfer station. And again, for those that weren't here, it is a big conversation among residents in the community that when they take stuff on Saturdays, which a lot of people do, and the swap area is closed, they got to just throw it in the trash. And my wife's not happy about it, because I got a whole lot of stuff that I brought home. It's really good stuff, and it's just, I think it's the right thing to do. The sidewalks are tertiary. I think the other reason would be to help Earl out.
Absolutely.
And which would help the town, you know, in the long run.
Absolutely. And I will say, if I can respond to that, too, we left Earl with homework after workshop last week for kind of thinking through what it would look like to actually do more of the downtown sidewalks. So he's in his research phase, so he'll understand a bit more of what it would take to implement that.
Okay. Thank you for considering it, and I want to try to be part of the solution, not part of the problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, some ideas. If there's nobody else wanting to speak, could I sit down and just ask?
Jay, I would just add one more thing. The thing that I think was surprising is not that Earl is concerned about how, whether he could do it, whether he, if he had the manpower, but actually that in the past, there has been pushback from commercial property owners who would rather clear the sidewalk themselves in their own way and actually do not want the town to clear the sidewalk. So I think that's something for consideration of your fellow property owners, so I think that might be the way that you could also help this, is to be a part of that conversation.
Well, I wasn't aware of that, and I was looking at it more like a phase one, in case, it at least opens the sidewalks up for safety, for the customers, for our residents. That's important, and that's a big, at least clears a whole lot of it off, and then the property owners can do it more. The one other thing I just want to mention, I've mentioned this before, my good friends on the Housing Task Force, I think you've done a great job, and I've said this before, and I would just beg, and I'm going to go to the meeting tomorrow night, I'm going to go to the meeting on the first, I think there's some meeting on the first with the traffic study. This idea of eliminating mandatory parking requirements, if I understand it correctly, build an apartment building with no parking requirements? Is that what I hear?
No.
Oh, okay. But also eliminate, help me, John.
Just reducing the requirements.
Okay. And if, you know, I've talked to some, I've mentioned this to some of my, like Boston, New York, big developer friends, and they said, "You can build an apartment building with one space per unit, if each unit has three or 10 or 20 bedrooms." They say, "We want to go to Freeport and develop these and then leave," thank you very much. It's kind of, I would just be careful with that, really, because I think it's going to create confusion, so. And I'll continue to contribute to try to offer some solutions for that, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Millet, and I live at Hummingbird Lane, and I wanted to follow up on emails I'd sent with coming in person and just kind of bringing up, not the issue that I talked to you about in person, but just talking at large about my area of town. And I live in Hummingbird Lane, which is below the train tracks, and come and either zoom in or attend a lot of public forums at FEDC or as a member of the library board or just as a downtown resident who cares a whole lot. And one of the things that I've been noticing when I look at maps that are viewed, when they have close proximity to my neighborhood, is that often they're cropped at the railroad track, and I brought an example of that. I did the math today, and I realized 8% of Freeport households actually live in the block that's 375 feet within the Amtrak station. 8% of households live there. And I think when I, in the past two weeks of emailing, have been kind of very argumentative on behalf of my own family and behalf of the neighbors that live side by side with me, I try to also take a step back to think about what, on an FEDC level, or as a town person who cares a lot about our economy and about kids and about youth and teens having a place to be, how would I think if I was sitting in your seat about some of the things things that you've been talking about lately that may be coming up on your agendas in the near future? I would welcome you to consider what it feels like to live near downtown, because that park, the parking lots and the concrete buildings amplify sound significantly in a way that I have not been able personally to find research about. So I don't think you will either. So I don't know if there, when we're talking about noise ordinances or resources we could use to consider downtown noise, I'd just ask the council to consider what resources we might have to play with, whether it's adding plants or walls or different things. If we are going to start bringing activity downtown that is not housing, because I don't think housing would bring additional sound, are there opportunities to also put in noise mitigation so that the families who live there can also have that middle of the road and keep having their peace? So I did bring example maps, just kind of showing the kinds of maps that have been reviewed in recent meetings versus the homes that were cropped out of those maps as a visual. But I also did not want them to be perceived as rude, you know, frankly, because I, we want, we want to live and we want to be good neighbors at the end of the day, but we also, we want to also be respected as people who live there.
Thank you. I would love to see the maps personally. As Chris knows, I love maps in general. And also, I, this resonates with me. I live on what was, until very recently, the outside of many maps of developments in downtown. It's actually part of the reason why I'm here, why I ran for council, was to advocate for Route 1 North, where we don't have amenities or sidewalks and get a lot of loud traffic. So I hear you, and I appreciate your advocacy for your neighborhood. I do it for my own little area, and please keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts for Stephanie? Okay. All right, we will move on. We're pausing for a minute? We are pausing for a minute for a technical difficulty.
I guess it didn't really mean what it said.
Zoom is lying today. Okay. Moving on. So we're on to our new business. So item 27-25. This is our consent agenda. So we're going to pull off item 27-25C. We have some actions related to Hunter Road Fields, so we're going to move this to after item 34-25 at the end of new business. So with that taken off, we have a liquor license renewal, endorsement of the annual dog warrant, and that's it. Any questions or discussion?
Just a request for Chris to send around the list of dogs.
Counselor Smith made sure to email specifically to ask for this.
I said you would want to see.
And then we'll all want to see it, so.
I'll pass it down.
Thank you.
Who knew?
All right. Counselor Egan, could you please read the be ordered?
Be it ordered that the March 18th, 2025 consent agenda be adopted.
Do we need to say as amended?
As amended, yeah.
As amended.
I'll second that.
All right. If there's no discussion, other than Dan, make sure you pass that back this way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item 28-25. This is for a public hearing, for amending Chapter 21 Freeport zoning ordinance related to manufactured housing. Kyle, do you have some background?
Hi, everyone. Kyle Drexler, Town Planner. So we talked about this the last council meeting, I believe. This is a fairly small ordinance amendment designed to bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with state law. So in March 2024, there is a revision to state law, an act to amend the regulations of manufactured housing to increase affordable housing. Basically, the purpose of this was to require that all municipalities permit manufactured housing in any zoning district in communities where single-family housing was allowed. So manufactured housing includes both modular homes and mobile homes. Modular homes, we already considered in our ordinance, you know, under a single-family housing designation if it came forward. But mobile homes were specifically separated out as a unique land use. So there were a few zoning districts where mobile homes specifically were a permitted use. Those were the RR1, MDR1, MDA, MDB, and RP2. So what the amendment does is change some definitions around to reflect the state law changes and remove the mobile home land use designations from those zoning districts. And going forward, mobile homes, along with modular homes, would fall under that manufactured housing designation and simply be permitted as a single-family home going forward in zoning districts where those are allowed. Last time, there was a question on zoning districts where single-family houses weren't currently in allowed use. So I did just double-check on that. So there are five zones in town where they're not allowed. So the commercial four, VC1, local business, LB, and the industrial one and industrial two. So they're all pretty small-scale, purpose of them is to be non-residential for, in most cases, you know, maybe aside from the VC1, which is, you know, promoting more of a high-density land use. And existing single-family homes are, you know, continue to allow to exist there, but new single-family homes aren't. But in general, those are pretty small areas of towns where those zones are designed to capture some existing, you know, larger-scale commercial and industrial land uses. So other than that, this went to the Planning Board for a public hearing on February 5th, where the board voted unanimously to recommend it to council and that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. So now we're in our second meeting here with council, and we're, you know, looking for a vote for adoption. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. So this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing if anyone would like to speak on this item. All right. And with that, I will close the public hearing. Counselor Pillsbury, will you please read the be ordained?
Sure. Be it ordained that proposed amendments to the Freeport zoning ordinance regarding municipal compliance with 30A MRS Section 4358 Regulation of Manufactured Housing. Proposed amendments to Chapter 1, Chapter 21 zoning ordinance include changes to Section 104 definitions, Section 202 nonconformance. Article 4 zoning district regulations and Section 524 mobile home parks be adopted. Second.
Great. Any discussion or questions for Kyle?
Very clear memo. Thanks, Kyle.
Yes, and thank you. This is the second time you've described this to us, so thank you, it's very helpful. Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kyle. All right. Item 29-25. This is to consider action relative to setting a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Freeport's voting districts. Counselor Lawrence.
Be it ordered that the public hearing be set for April 1st, 2025. Sorry, I gotta turn the mic on. I'll start that again. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 1st, 2025 in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM to consider the adoption of amended voting districts to make the number of registered voters in each district equal.
Second.
All right. Chris, take it away.
So our municipal charter requires that we look at our voting districts every five years. Two years ago, when we hit the five-year mark, our numbers were incredibly close. They were about, we were off. So I asked if I could come back with redistricting after the presidential election, and having waited, it made it so that we really do have some numbers to move around. It's gonna be easier if I point. So districts one and two were heavy, and districts three and four were light by between 50 to 70 voters. So with the help of Min, thank God, he used.
Chris, could you use the cordless mic so we can hear you?
So we used his software to look at the districts, and he was, we were able to easily put out some, what we propose. So in the areas that are lined is where we're going to move districts. So we're going to move District 1, I'm sorry, we're going to move District 3 up. So we're going to move 3 up, so it's straight across Desert Road. So the lines show where 3 is coming up into 4 and 1. A little piece of 3 here will come up, and then over here, this will become District 2, and these little lots here will become District 4. So it was funny, I was talking to my therapist about this today, and she said, oh, so you have a cookie, and you need to make sure that there's the same number of chocolate chips in every cookie. So that's all we're doing. We really moved 50 and 60 voters from two districts to the other two. And what I'm going to do, if you approve the public hearing tonight, is I'm going to send letters to everyone that, all the voters that are being affected, so that they're personally notified, and then we're going to do our normal blast out to the whole, the whole of town to let them know that this is going on, even if they're not affected, they could come to the public hearing.
Did you mention that no councillors were, no one changed districts?
Oh, and no councillors got moved. And after.
No councillors were harmed in the making of this map.
Yes.
But I just want to be very clear that we had to go back after we did it to look at that, that we did not let that play into our, our process. We looked at trying to make it make sense with boundaries, and in some, some cases, we could absolutely do that, and others, it was more difficult. The other thing I just want to let you know, Min just texted to make sure that we knew that the library also has a copy of this map for the public to see.
Can I ask you a question? I like that everything is moved up to roads to be boundaries, which makes a ton of sense. But I have a question about the two little parcels on South Street that are being moved out of District 1. I don't particularly know who lives there, so not advocating one way or another, but especially the parcel, parcels near South Street and West Street, that little group of, I can't see how many, it's two or three parcels.
Are there any numbers on it?
The, is there any way to keep that in District 1 only? Because I feel like those concerns might be similar to the concerns about the, you know, other residents in that area might have, that parcel and the one closer to Porter's Landing, which feels more like the Porter's Landing neighborhood. So I'm concerned that those would be downtown concerns, and I'd like to see them in District 1 if there's a way to do that cleanly.
Okay. Can we pull it over here, maybe? Oh, wait, no, they have to move it over here.
That one and this one, these two little ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not a lot of people, but.
So right up here.
So, yes. If we did that, if we went over to like where, there are two down here.
Maybe over here?
Sure, let's look at that.
Yeah, there's a bunch of different things that I went through as well. I'm happy to noodle with you if you want, but.
Yeah, I think that would be.
But I feel like if there's a way to give up some of the more rural parts of District 1, it's a little bit more of a cohesive district.
Any other thoughts from councillors? So this is for setting a public hearing, and it's been read and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Can I just ask, are the little numbers on here actual ones or people?
Voters, number of voters at that.
It's registered voters, right?
And so Chris made a good point when we were talking about this last week of, it's a point in time because the number of voters changes.
Every day.
Very consistently, so. All right, so that is now set for April 1st. Okay, moving on to item 31-25. This is to consider action relative to the acceptance of a Bureau of Highway Safety printer grant.
We're skipping over the service charge.
Just kidding. Item 30-25, I was just testing all of you. To consider action, this is for setting a public hearing regarding amendments to Chapter 29, ordinance to levy service charges on certain tax-exempt property. Counselor Dolch?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 1st, 2025 in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM to consider amendments to Chapter 29, ordinance to levy service charges on certain tax-exempt property to align with state law and internal organizational practices.
Second.
So this revision does a few things. First, it was brought to our attention that the authority that is listed in the original ordinance does, has been repealed by the legislature. So we kind of had to go find the right citation for that. So that was the initial impetus. Then we did the mundane task of just changing the structure of the ordinance so that it aligned with the way we're now adopting with a chapter and a, and a section of each ordinance, so that if it's quoted, you'll know what chapter it's coming from. As you look at this, the major changes changed the person imposing the tax from the assessor to the town manager, and the reason for that is that our tax assessor felt very strongly that he assessed taxes and not fees. And when we talked about this in ordinance committee, the committee was fine because we maintained that balance of it being able to be appealed to the town council. So that was there. The other thing that we did is we exempted the town of Freeport from the ordinance, so if in any, at any time in the future, we were the owner of land as a tax-exempt body that was of rental property, that we wouldn't necessarily be charged the fee. There is one, I would say typo in the language that's presented to you that eagle eyes, Counselor Brown picked up on, which is in Section 29-2, we say that an annual service charge is hereby established, which may be imposed by the town manager against all residential property. And then we go into the great abyss of lines out and underlines, and we kept the word owner, which should not say owner. It should just say property that is totally exempt from taxation. So we just need to take out that owner. I think he solved that for us. And that is, that's it, not very complicated, but a change. I will say that there was discussion at the ordinance committee about the fact that we have had this on the books for quite a while, we've never used it, was it important to have? And ultimately, the group came to the conclusion that it will be nice to have this here if we decide to do it in the future, so.
Any questions? Okay. It's been read and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Now the printer.
Now the printer grant. All right, so item 31-25, to consider action relative to the acceptance of a State of Maine Bureau of Highway Safety printer grant. Counselor Brown, could you please read the be ordered?
Be it ordered that the acceptance of a Bureau of Highway Safety printer grant award in the amount of $4,200 for the purchase of printers for patrol cars or use, to use Maine E-citation be approved.
Second.
Second.
Should I read the rest of it?
No, you're all set. Chief, would you like to say a few words on this one?
Good evening, council. So this was a, maybe five or six years ago, the state started moving over to E-citation, which essentially is an electronic version of record keeping as opposed to using what we currently use, which is a five copy hard ticket that someone would get. Copies that are then distributed throughout, to the courts, to BMV, to the issuing agency, to the person receiving the ticket. And when this started coming out, I think Freeport's stance was essentially, let's kind of wait and see how this progresses and where this goes. So that was about five years ago. So last year, legislation was enacted to kind of get everyone on the same page for citations on one level. And on another level, there was, the state felt strongly that they wanted demographic data collected at the time of the stop. They wanted lat and longitude information. They wanted demographics of the driver. And I think I included the, maybe a link to the state statute that I'm referencing in my memo to the council and to the manager. So as we've progressed and seen now that we're doing more and more from the, from the police cars, we can actually use the E-citation software to track all this data for us and compile it. So it's going to save our staff a lot of time and effort in compiling this manually every week and submitting it to the state. It's going to compile a lot of this into the existing computer system that we have. So the officers who are working can actually write out warnings. They can write out trespass notices, disorderly conduct warnings. Almost any paperwork that we were formally hand generating can now be done in the car. We installed the, one of the last updates we did, we installed scanners. So now they can scan driver's licenses right from the car, pulling a lot of data and registration information. So I think for us to maintain kind of a high level of service and reduce redundancy and then maintain state compliance now is probably a good time for us to come on board with this system. Officer Mears, who works on the waterfront, had some time this winter. So he's been searching out grants to help support some of these things. And he was able to secure just under 50% funding for this, should council approve the expenditure for the other half.
Chief, can you just explain, I'm curious, with everything going to an electronic format, I'm assuming there's a laptop or some sort of computing device in the vehicle?
Yes.
And is that vehicle communicating wirelessly or is it through a radio band? How, how is that computer communicating?
So currently, we have a VPN setup that connects cellular, cellularly with our infrastructure here in town. And then it bounces to Brunswick, where our dispatch center is. And then from there, it goes to the state. And that information is all pretty heavily encrypted, that whole system. For us to actually use the system, we have to pass a lot of encryption checkmarks on our in-house computer systems as well as the hub, the communication hub in Brunswick and then our repeater towers around town. So it integrates with our current radio system and with the VPN connection in each, in each mobile, mobile data terminal in each police car.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm just watching too many movies, I guess. But with all that data being collected and downloaded and you get information on the driver and you get information on the vehicle and it's then wirelessly going, leaving the vehicle, that's what I'm concerned about, is that it's.
Oh, yeah.
That it's encrypted.
Yeah.
Somebody driving by isn't picking it up.
Yeah, I, I believe the state, the current system that we are utilizing, we have to maintain a high level of security to.
I'm sure.
Access that system and they monitor it in real time. We know if there's a ripple in the fabric because they call us immediately and say, we detected this or this. And so we know that they're actively monitoring it in real, in real time.
I just wanted to clarify my own.
Yeah, no, it's a lot of moving parts. It's a good question.
Thank you.
Just a quick administrative question. It says the deadline for applying to the grant is March 14th and it's March 18th.
Yes, I apologize for that. My thought process was if the council isn't in approval, we can always walk away from the grant. So we can submit paperwork and, you know, all we've done is apply.
Okay, so you're, you're in under the 14th deadline?
We are.
Okay.
We, we got the packet in so we can at least get preliminary approval. If you decide for whatever reason, no, we just simply reach back out to the entity, tell them we're withdrawing and it's no harm, no foul. We didn't discover the grant until like maybe seven or eight working days ago, about two weeks ago. So we hurried and tried to put the packet together before the deadline.
Do you know what the useful life of the printers are and what the plan for like maintenance and upkeep will be? And would a subsequent grant be applicable? Or is this like a one-time offering from the state just to get the program up and going?
The link through the state grant funding, Bureau of Highway Safety, from my reading of it, it's a one-time event for this purchase. Any subsequent, the printers themselves, I think, are a little bit of a ruggedized version of kind of a standard printer, but it's big enough to, to print eight and a half by 11 sheets of paper. I know other communities around us have been using it for five, six, seven years and I'm hearing positive things from them. Not a super huge expenditure for ink. I'm not hearing a lot of upkeep issues unless there's an event that causes something to actually break. The, but this is something that we'll have to absorb into our operating costs. I would expect a service life of probably a five-year service life out of this type of equipment.
Just curious, I mean, I, I have no doubt that the future is not writing paper tickets and the efficiencies we're going to gain in terms of staff time more than covers the cost. I, I was just curious about some of the specifics.
Yeah, no, and we can also, you know, warnings can be issued, civil citation, civil orders for trespass, harassment, disorderly conduct. And those things can be printed right off from those printers, which will, which will be helpful as well.
Great, thanks.
Can they email the citation?
Statutorily, I think we have to present it in hand at the ti, at the point.
Right.
I think there has to be a, they, there's probably a potential that if you, let's say, for instance, I mean, there's always the backup handwritten, but it's like, for instance, something, somewhere to spill a coffee on the printer and they couldn't use it for that, for several hour period of time before we could remedy it, they could just have to go back to the old school. It's like you go into the store, they lose power and they have to scan your credit card and enter it manually later. We probably have to operate.
More like if I lost the citation, would it be in my emails?
I think there's, I think there's an option to get another copy sent to a cellphone. Or I don't, I don't know for sure, but I would guess that there would be a backup ability. I know having young people in my household, one of whom received a ticket recently, they can go online and they can enter in certain demogra, some, certain data that they have control over and they can pull up any tickets they have pending.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That would have been a great dinner conversation for listening.
It always is, yeah. It always is.
You, you mentioned ink, chief, and I'm just wondering, are these inkjet printers or are they toner-based printers? Or do you, is that a level? Well, right, I mean, that, which would be laser. The reason I'm asking is, is thinking about this being a virtually outdoor situation where you're immediately taking it out and into whatever weather. So inkjet printers don't do well with that? And so I'm assuming that, because you're hearing good things from the departments, that is not an issue. I'm just curious what the technology is.
I don't know 100%. I can find out and I can email out the answer to council after this meeting. I can find out specifically the model. I, it's all in our grant paperwork. The, the models I saw were very compact and very small. So I don't know if that leans one way or the other. But I, from the people around us who have been, the agencies around us who have been using them for a good deal of time, I haven't heard any negatives about, you know, the paper melting or things like that.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, particularly if it's compact, that it would probably be like a laser, toner-based, that's just, would be much more compact and better.
But I can find out for sure.
Better in terms of document survival.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, all in favor? I, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, good work to your staff who found the grant opportunity too. That's great.
All right, moving on to item 32-25, to consider action relative to adoption of the 2025 Town Council goals. I believe I'm up to you, Counselor Smith.
Be it ordered that the 2025 council goals be adopted.
Second.
All right, so this is following up on our conversation at our last council meeting about how Sophie is working with her teams on sort of the action plan and how we implement these goals. But we wanted the opportunity to bring these back to council to review, discuss and potentially adopt, so.
The only question I have is how do we know we've accomplished these?
Which I think is part of what the staff is working on, right? So if you want to speak more about what their processes looked like, I know they have committees formed and they're working on sort of taking these and making sure they're achievable and measurable, so.
Should we wait for that to adopt the goals? I mean.
Well, we had discussed wanting to adopt them as our official goals with the understanding that staff has vetted them to make sure they are achievable in ways that we will approve later on.
Can I just say, I don't think staff is vetting your goals. I think that your goals are your goals. I think what staff is working on is here are the steps that we think we can take in between now and the end of this calendar year. Here are kind of benchmarks that you should, we could be holding each other to. Here is how we think we can do that. So as an example, we look at the timeline for TIF renewal. The way that that is playing out is kind of a Gantt chart with all the steps that we need to hit and when we think we need to hit those steps. And the, the reason I think it's important to do that is if so much of your work is about staff getting something to you to then refer on or work, work on, give feedback to. So the idea being your goals become, get woven into our priorities. So it might be, when you think about maintain sta, uh, stable residential property tax burden, minimize, minimizing the increase while balancing quality public services. We talked about this during the goal setting, that if you're in a growth mode, which a lot of, some of the other things you want to do are growth, it's going to be hard to be small. And what you came back to me with was it's not necessarily small, it's stable, it's well thought out, it's planned. And so to kind of give you a lens to look at that with, I think when I look at this, I see lots of measurable things that we can look at. That you might not get all, I mean, this is a lot of work, but you also pick things that had already sort of been identified. So they're already in pipeline of process. So it's about getting this moved further along.
I will say, I say vetting, but, you know, I think the intention is we set these goals. We want to make sure that we're not suddenly making this unrealistic. We want to make sure these are achievable. Counselor Lawrence?
Right, that's what, make sure they're achievable, make sure that we have something to measure about. Say, oh, yep, we made this. Right now, we don't. In here, and so, and one of the issues, not that this happens, but it's like, oh, well, well, we can change this, we can change, you know, we need a, like you said, a benchmark to reach. When you approve a goal, so that it doesn't keep, well, I don't know, we can lower it or we can raise it as, as we need to, just to give us something. And it is a goal, it's not an achieve, right?
So I think the concern that we were voicing last meeting is that we are almost at the end of the first quarter of the year and, and, and staff has already done, it sounds like, an enormous amount of work on these goals. So if we don't adopt them, we're sort of wasting the staff's time. If these aren't, aren't the goals that we actually want them to be working on or toward. But also, since we did this now two months ago, we wanted to make sure that this is in fact the wording that we want to go forward with, knowing that there's still a lot of work to do in terms of exactly what you're talking about, making them measurable. But I'm not sure if we don't adopt them now, what we're waiting for to make them more measurable, except to ask the staff to do even more work on these same goals. So that, I guess, is, I, I'm not sure what the purpose is in not adopting them, if this is actually what we want to be working on.
Yeah, I think in a perfect world, what we would have done is we would have drafted these, brought them back to council sooner, adopted them, worked with staff, bring back the action plan. But we just, first time, we're trying. Yes, Counselor Pilch?
The only one I had a question on was number five. Develop guiding plan for increased housing, makes sense. Second part of that is including total goal of housing units by type and year-by-year plan to achieve those goals. Do we want to take that on and say we want this many units of affordable housing in this year and that one in that year?
Matt, that was your suggestion, so I'm looking at you.
I mean.
Nice way to pass the buck.
No, I, it's a question for debate, right? My opinion is without an actionable plan, it just becomes something we try to do and we're probably not going to end up any better off than we are now. We need, in my opinion, we need something that's a guiding principle. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be. It's probably not going to be the final product, but we at least need to know, are we trying to, are we trying to develop X number within the first zero to five years? Five to 10, 10 to 15? I think we need an idea of what type of housing, where it might go, what the suitable plots are. Without, without getting some more detail on this, we'll, in my opinion, we'll just never get anywhere. We'll just keep saying, we just need more housing and we'll wait to see what sort of projects might come our way. Now, the beauty of, of trying to define some of this is that it doesn't have to be, we've come up with a plan, the 100% plan. It can be we start and we get into it and we start developing a couple of projects and then we reassess and see what impact that's having on the town and what the next few years look like. But I, I think, I mean, maybe we can tweak the wording, but I think we need something.
Yeah, and I think, I thought on that too, is that the Dogbone has done a lot of that preliminary work in, in general of, you know, the benefit of how much housing we'd want to see on sort of tax burden and.
They've done some scenarios that said like, if, if we had this money, this would be the impact.
Yep.
But I don't want to confuse that with, that's our goal. And we want 37 units of 80% affordable housing in U3. Only because I, I think it's, I'm afraid we won't get there, not through any fault of our own, right? We, we don't, other than some of the recommendations that John might talk about, talked about earlier, we're not developing projects. So we can't say we, we're going to plan 13 units here. We can set the conditions and we can encourage, we want the bulk of the new housing to be affordable or even mix of housing. There's something a little bit more, that has a little bit more leeway to it.
Maybe it's a tracker, right? So we have, we're keeping tabs on it. Also, Counselor Egan, I know you had your hand up.
Just that there's, there are some data points, just to start the conversation. A year and a half ago, the state hired a consultant who did an excellent report. There's been subsequent versions tackling different aspects of our housing needs, including some that I referenced in the recommendations. H and R A is the name of the consultant and they have an ongoing relationship. So they're monitoring and they're updating the data and it's, and there's a portal and I think we've talked about all of this. But just to get a conversation started, you can punch in Freeport and it'll tell you how many housing units we need. Of course, it's extrapolated from a bunch of data points on paper or, you know, in. Of course, it's extrapolated from a bunch of data points on paper, or, you know, in a database somewhere. It's not out here shopping around and interviewing people, but it's at least a place to start. And it also has some parameters of healthy mix for, that have been proven in economic climates, where you've got a mix of housing types, supporting various types of industry, related to your age demographic. If your age demographic leans old, here's the kind of housing types you want. If it's broadly diffused, then you want this kind. So there's a lot of data, just to start the conversation, already there, and I'd be happy to bring that to the April 8th workshop.
I always just say, to follow up on that conversation, too, I think when we talked about this at the goal-setting workshop, my understanding was, much as Matt said, it, it's trying to sort of build a roadmap that shows it's even possible, because nobody, we know nobody's coming and building 1,500 units this year or next year. But what could it look like? Because even if it's not what ends up happening, it's, I think, a point that we need to be able to communicate to residents about how we think it might happen. Because what, I think I hear a lot of questions about is, well, say you're going to build all this housing, is it all market-rate housing? Or we need affordable housing? But, you know, what is affordable housing? The other, you know, pushback I think we've heard at, at some of the comprehensive planning workshops is, what is it going to do in terms of infrastructure costs, service costs, schools, all of those things? And so to have an idea, I, I think of it kind of like building a campaign, like a fundraising campaign. You have a goal, and you, you create a structure where you can say, it's, I need this many of this, and this many of this, and this many of that, and that's how I get to that goal. That doesn't mean that that's necessarily exactly how you're going to get there, but at least shows that it's possible.
I, I think it does two other things to tie into what Eric was saying, is, one, it allows us to articulate a general plan and, and get thoughts and feedback prior to projects being, you know, in front of the review board, or it allows, like, folks to normalize what might be coming. It also allows us to view progress that we're making against it with a lens toward what levers do we need to push and pull, to keep engaging certain types of development, or certain activity, or different land use, or different ordinance changes. Like, it gives us something to tell us, are we on track, or are we overweight in one area? It just gives us a better way to respond.
What about if we just take out the year-by-year? So we include a total goal of housing units by type and a plan to achieve those goals? That gets you more to like the, this many in zero to five, and this many in five to 10 years. I think that was what I was concerned about, is year three versus year four, which doesn't really matter as much as in the first five years.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe it was more like in brackets of years. I think the idea was not actually year-by-year, it was like year one to three, or one to five, and then moving up from there.
That's, that sounds good to me.
To, to take year-by-year.
Take it out, yeah. Is that everybody else?
Do you need me to amend that?
Well, any other thoughts before we go that route? All right. Do you have anything, Counselor Brown?
A year-by-year goal might not be achieved, but it still gives an idea of the bones of a, of a plan. So I'm just wondering if, I mean, a, a goal is just a goal, it's, it's some notion of a plan, so.
Do you feel, do you feel the, the brackets, the one to five, five, six to 10, is that...
Some indication would be useful.
So I'm going to propose, one possible way to solve that is to change year-by-year to and timeline. So it would read, including total goal of housing units by type and timeline to achieve these goals. And then what that timeline is, what the, what the total horizon is, and what the individual segments are, we could figure out.
Great.
Is it much different?
I think it gives us built-in flexibility to keep having this conversation, yeah. All right. So I suppose we should do as amended. We have to reread it. Okay. So we'll vote for it as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item 33-25, for action relative to determining the amount of the fire department ladder truck purchase price to be bonded. I will read it. Be ordered that the town manager be authorized to finalize the main municipal bond bank bond application with the principal amount of $1.5 million.
Second.
Matt, I have you on this one. You're our chair of the Finance Committee.
Wow, if I'd known what came with that responsibility, I may not have...
You actually didn't vote for yourself, so.
I didn't. Now, I'll, I'll frame the discussion, but it's very much a discussion up here to, as to whether or not we landed on the right amount. So the Finance Committee looked at how much to bond for the truck, and staff did a great job of laying out a few different scenarios. I don't, do we have the document handy, Sophie?
Right.
Maybe we could pull it up, it might, it might be helpful. But either way, what we did is we looked at what would happen if we bonded 100%, 80%, 50, and 0%, and the impacts that it would have on carrying cost of the loan, as well as the impact to the reserves. And it was very helpful to lay out those scenarios. We had some robust discussion around the use of the principal out of the reserve account, and what that would do to our long, medium, short, medium, and long-term flexibility of being able to fund other things that are coming up in the capital improvement plan. We talked about interest rate costs for bonding now, we think it's probably going to land someplace between 3.5% and 4%. We talked about the current return that we're, we're seeing on our reserve accounts, which mimics that 3.5% to 4%. So...
When you say the cost of the bond, you mean the interest rate, or do you mean the issueless cost?
The interest rate.
Okay, thank you.
And because of all those things, staff did make a recommendation, also given, you know, our, our low debt service at the moment, to bond 100%. And that was also based on the fact that 20-year bond, right, Sophie?
So I was corrected, of course, not in the moment, but I was corrected after 20 payments, 10-year bond.
Okay.
There we go.
And the useful life of the equipment is going to far exceed that. So the scenario makes sense, the flexibility remaining in our capital reserves makes sense. And so staff recommended we bond the entire amount. It's not something that myself or the rest of the committee took lightly. I don't like the idea of, of sort of bonding things. We have a history of being frugal and good stewards of, of town resources and paying as we go, but this is something that seems to make sense for, for the reasons I, I mentioned above. So that's a recommendation that came out of committee, happy to have the discussion up here and, and sort of kick the argument around.
Yeah, and I think one piece as well is, right on the other side of the horizon is another truck, so thinking that we have to start planning for that as well, so.
So I sent our very talented cable TV team to three different email addresses, this document. I am hoping it will appear somewhere.
I see you moving around over there.
There we go. You notice if I talk into thin air, Tom tends to...
He's listening.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, I'm sorry to, no, Tom, no, it would be up the other way. Hmm, you didn't get it?
Is this part of the agenda for Civics 101?
Um, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it was.
So I did Freeport TV at, oh, I did the wrong email address, let me try again, sorry.
So while we wait for this to come up, which is the, the report that Jessica put together, any thoughts, questions?
I, I would just say, I think I have, we, we've been tossing this around for a long time, and as we've been looking at the capital budget, the capital plan, where we already know that we are underfunded in some ways in the reserves. As much as I would like to be able to use funds we already have on hand, that's kind of the entire point of why we're not doing it with this, with this particular vehicle, is that while we have the approval for that amount, while the interest rates are favorable to do that, I think it makes sense to borrow that, which, as, as Matt said, leaves us the funds in the capital reserves to continue to use for other things, so that we don't have to bond other equipment.
Yeah.
Or other major improvements.
And I think an important point, I'm not sure if you made this, Matt, of, we did a good job planning, we, we have the funds, we do, it's there, it's just we're looking to be strategic.
Yeah, as long as we use it for what we, you know, for funding the capital plan, and not other things that are nice to have but are not need to have.
There's always another truck in the future.
True, but I mean, since our capital fund is low, I mean, this is a good vehicle to do that, so.
So there's the doc for you.
So by way of explanation, I think, if I remember right, there's four scenarios, you know, one on each line. If we bond 100%, I think it's, I can't see the numbers, 80%, 50%, and 0%, something like that? And then what would be left, the last columns, what's left over in that reserve account?
And that would be with, with no other contribution, so there would be more contribution, but this is just what we know we have.
So our recommendation was to go with the first line, the 100% option.
I'm in favor of, of bonding for it, because I think it makes the most sense financially. But I'm particularly still remembering that a couple of years ago, we saw this vehicle coming in the plan, and we thought we were reserving enough for it, and then when we get to where we have to buy, it's a little early, but we still didn't have enough money because of the price increases. I really would love us to start a conversation where these enormous, at least from my perspective, capital purchases, that we look outside of the community, to see if there's any possibility of a regional share on these things. For, you know, a town of our size to be picking up one and a half million dollar vehicles, which we absolutely need for public safety, I'm not denying that at all, but it just seems like with the price increases, if there's a way to work on a strategy, maybe even have, maybe even have some students or somebody work on the data crunching of where those vehicles are used, and how often, what the history has been, we have a lot of data that we can pull from. I know the Public Safety Department teams keep a lot of good data. So if there's a way for us to have those conversations, that'd be great.
So just, I'm not sure, I meet with so many different slices of the council, you know, we, we meet so many times, so I'm not sure, I probably haven't said this to the full council, but we are actually in the process right now of applying for an EMS, an emergency medical services strategic plan consultant to come in and help us build, to evaluate how we provide EMS services, and how we, how we need to plan for a sustainable future. And part of that is this integration of a more regional approach, right? And the thing that we, the grant won't cover the fire, fire side of that, however, our goal is to put that in the operating budget if we get the grant for next year. So we would actually, the way we put that out, we had to do an RFP for the consultant, because you had to have a consultant before you could apply for the grant. And the way we did the RFP, it's an add-on, so it was for both services based on funding. So if we only get the, the grant and council says no to the fire evaluation...
The grant covers EMS, and our, our contribution would cover the fire, yep.
And so the, the, there were two consultants. One was more inward-looking, and the one that we chose was very much more looking at the region and how to make it more sustainable long-term. We went with, so we went with somebody who was looking at how we might all work together a little bit better, which fits with the, what's happening, just the conversation regionally right now with fire and EMS, trying to find more regional approaches.
Yeah, I know, staff issues are in the same category. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll get your truck.
We already have the truck.
Okay, well, I know, how are we going to pay for the truck? Yeah. It's so exciting.
Yes, it is. And it will be yellow.
Oh, you say, was there a discount if it wasn't yellow?
Yeah, making it yellow added $5,000 to the price.
Ah, wow.
But given the, the council who was here at the time that the vote was taken, we went with yellow.
All right. So moving on to item 34-25, this is to consider action relative to temporary, temporary changes to the Hunter Road Fields Advisory Committee membership. Counselor Egan, we're back to you.
Be ordered that the Hunter Road Fields Advisory Committee membership is temporarily changed to reflect the appointment of Conservation Commission member Michael Pistrang to the vacant seat, with the intention of realigning the membership to the chapter, to Chapter 2 Administrative Code, Section 615.1 Establishment.
Second.
Chris, go ahead.
Okay, so that was a lot of words to kind of describe our Hunter Road Fields membership criteria. So what the, what our admin code says is, we should have one representative from each district, a conservation rep and an RSC rep. Well, in times past, since I've been here, it has been hard to keep the number of members up, so some exceptions were made in order to keep the membership up, and they'd have a quorum. When Nelson came on, he was a prior Conservation Commission member, so we kind of felt like, well, that sort of fills that there. But we've always been like, we've had a hard time filling District 4. Having said all that, we can bring our membership into alignment, it, it will require you to approve one extra member for a period of one year. And to explain, Matt Guyer is, doesn't want to be reappointed, so he's going to be done at the end of March. Matt is up for reappointment, he's going to, he will be on, he's not up for reappointment, I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing, but his term expires next year. Joni Thompson is on the consent agenda to be appointed here. Michael is a Conservation Commission member, he has agreed to serve there. So, all the way around the barn. If we approve the appointments tonight, it will put one extra member on until Matt expires next March, and then we just, that will go away, we'll have our proper alignment, and hopefully we'll be able to stay with our membership criteria.
Okay, so, is this like a minimum we have to have?
Yes, so we're supposed to have one, six, so, six, yep.
In the ordinance, does it preclude us from putting more on there? You know, is it, is it a minimum, or is it...
I, I think it's clearly outlined.
It's prescriptive, it will be this, this, and this, and, well, you don't really have, you really can't violate your own ordinance, except you have been, and so this is the way to get us back on track.
Right, and I get that, so maybe we need to change the ordinance, tweak it a little bit to say, look, we want to have a minimum of six members, a maximum of a similar number, and it should be this as soon as you get, instead of, because we've been violating it.
But now we have a plan that you won't violate it.
Well, now, but in two years.
You're saying, I guess, this continues to be a, a committee that's hard to get volunteers on.
Right, so we don't have to break it because it has been hard to get someone from District 4, so.
So I guess my only, my only pushback on that would be, so if you, unless you purposefully said and will add two members at large, right? That, then the question comes in, you have purposefully, for whatever reason, the decision was made that you wanted representation from the entire town and you wanted it relatively even. And so now if you say a minimum of six and then you start adding at-large or others, you're gonna start weighting the representation. If that's what, if you, if you don't care, if it's kind of like council where we have four that are purposeful and three others that can be from at-large, that, well, very purposeful but for everybody. I just, I, I would just want to be careful. And the other piece, I would say, making this committee larger, we have such a hard time finding people to serve.
I understand, I'm, but in order to avoid this going forward, we can keep it at six. I'm just saying, if we put in there that you could have more and you try to make it so it's one from each district. As a matter of fact, if it's a choice between two really good candidates from one district and someone from another district, trying to fill that districts, then you go with District 4. If two candidates are great from District 2 and you have a candidate from District 4 that is not, you still need to appoint that person from District 4. I'm just saying, trying to get away from not having to break our rules like we've had to do the last five years.
Is there history that would, that sort of, is the reason why we made this committee this way? That we had to have like equal representation or there was one district that was weighted more?
I mean, I don't know your answer. We've just gone to the trouble of balancing our districts, which mean they're all the same. So what's wrong with having equal representation in something like the fields? It just makes sense to me.
There's that, but there's also, it's in District 4, right?
Right.
So.
When, when the town purchased Hunter Road Fields and developed the site for the great facility that we have today, there was quite a bit of discussion about the oversight of the commission being intentionally weighted to neighbors and District 4 residents where the impact was with traffic and with noise and with events, et cetera. So that's the reason for the composition of the committee.
Can I ask a question? Michael and Peter, they're also district residents, are they not? So could they fill two roles?
So that's kind of what happened with Nelson when he, yeah, it, we, they need to fill one criteria, yeah.
Is there also a town counselor? The ordinance says there's seven and one of them is a town counselor.
Yeah, well, I'm.
Oh, you're on, okay. But you're not a liaison, you're actually a voting member, the way this is written.
Both.
Yeah.
We've had one meeting.
Okay.
We are having another one in April, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's not for us, I mean, we could take.
I don't know if maybe the admin code in boards and committees could take, we could look at that separately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good, I mean, it's a good question, yeah. But for the sake of the conversation tonight, I think.
Yeah, this is fine.
Yeah, we feel good, yeah.
I would be really happy to have all our criteria filled.
Great. All right, so putting a pin in that, I think it's a good discussion to have, but it's been read and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for the color-coded explanation. It's really easy to understand.
I really appreciate visuals in general.
I met with my therapist today. She's like, oh, do it. Talk about a cookie.
That's amazing. Yes, so now, so we had, we pulled off this appointment schedule because of this conversation. So now going back to consent agenda of item 27-25C, any discussion on those? Sure.
This one?
Yes, go for it.
Pete ordered that March 18.
Pete ordered the March 18, 2025 consent agenda topic, 27-25C, be adopted.
All right, great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. And a small appointments update, Chris is keeping us very busy on the appointments committee and we have some pending interviews for reappointments and a few new folks next week.
Monday and Thursday.
Yeah, Monday and Thursday, so. We are moving forward on that, thank you. She's making us work. All right, so that concludes the new business portion. So now we're moving on to public comment period, part two, for folks who are on Zoom. Do we have anyone interested? Just Jim. Hi, Jim. All right, moving on to other business. So we have the short-term rental renewal update. That's also you, Chris.
So we completed our short-term rental registration renewal period. We had 70 short-term rentals renew. We have had two new short-term rentals since 2025 started in the first part of the year. We were notified that six of the properties are not going to be keeping their short-term rentals. And then we had six, which neither notified us that they were gonna stop being short-term rentals and neither renewed. So those six people have been notified via mail that they no longer have valid short-term rentals. And there were no complaints this year filed with codes or police.
None, zero.
Zero.
Was that five years running now?
Zero.
That's great.
Zero violation.
Any questions for Chris?
I just want to thank Chris for her diligence. Wrangling short-term rental owners is almost as hard as wrangling dog registrants. She's managed to track me down for both of them.
She knows how to find you.
The fact that six people managed to escape is, is quite remarkable, but.
So no one has paid the, so we've had, you know, $200 late fees yet. So when we met earlier, you had asked, kind of like, where are our short-term rentals? This is a map that plotted them, but then I said, Eric really wanted a heat map and I don't really know what a heat map is. And Min was like, of course I can do a heat map, so this will show you the areas where there's.
Upside down.
Oh, it's upside down! Well, it's still like this. So, yeah.
We should all be well-versed in the town map enough to be able to understand what's happening.
Yeah, I, that's striking to see that the geographic diversity in the community and not just all along the waterfront.
Yeah, downtown, quite a bit.
I'm gonna ask Min to please make sure counselors get the district map and also the heat map for the, these two maps. We'll just have him send them out so you have them.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, and then other business, our second item, the final item of the night, is the Capital Investment Plan Workshop with the focus on public safety. Jessica.
Thanks, Chris.
So I assume we'll do a similar setup to the workshop last week and leave it, I'll pose it. I've gone through the document as a whole to make it through the document works and, and how it's all linked together. So I guess at this point I would just leave it open to council on if there are particular questions and I guess in particular on the public safety articles, which are Articles 1 and 2, 1, 2 and 3 actually, sorry. To, I guess to revisit last week, Counselor Pilchew had asked about the bulletproof vests. The narrative, actually, I, I couldn't lay my eyes on it, though it niggled in my mind when it was brought up last week. The, the narrative and information for that is in the document as, as presented. It's just, it's labeled protective gear. And so it's just got, the narrative itself is just kind of rolled up into that unit of protective gear. Trying to save paper where I can of not creating a whole other page to say the same thing, so.
So yeah, similar to last, last week, this is a workshop, so feel free to just jump in and ask Jessica questions.
While we're focused on that page, that also includes night vision gear?
Yes.
I think, or that page does anyway, yeah. If I remember, we, we bought some, but not enough to outfit all the officers, so this is supplementing that with enough for everybody to have their own.
Correct.
And the firearms, is that an upgrade or is it just replacing with equivalent but less old firearms? We're not buying new types of firearms?
Not that I'm aware of. It's, it's to replace existing units.
I'm on a roll, I'll keep going, somebody's gonna have other questions. On the audio video car cameras, are those for the cars or are they for the buildings? The narrative talks more about like building cameras.
So this, I believe we would be evaluating the need overall of where we stand. I think we're looking at both, the need is in the, the PD vehicles that we, that we update on a, well, we try to on a regular basis, it's kind of, as Chief indicated, over 18 years old currently. But included in it would be a need for outfitting cameras within the building as well. The, I guess, the, if I'm understanding correctly, I believe the systems are kind of integrated as far as, not that they're the same, but that they, you know, they're, they're on the backend managed the same, right? So these would be replacing the.
Could be both.
Cameras within the buildings and the bays to upgrade those as well as what we have in the, in the vehicles.
We did allocate some money, I think it was last year, for public safety, security cameras. I think it was more on the rescue side. Do we have new cameras?
Yeah.
No, it was different than the body cameras. This was under fire rescue or something. It was only $16,000. The body cams were more than that.
Yeah, body cameras were a quarter of a million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That ring about $16,000 in new cameras?
16?
16.
That was building security measures, so that was like locks and, and things on the doors. It was more, I, I guess I can see the confusion. I considered it security measures, but I guess a camera would be considered a security measure as well.
Okay, thanks, Jessica.
What do we, we've talked about disposition plans for like vehicles and things like that. What do we do with night vision equipment, firearms, things like that? Is there cost associated with it or is there a value that we can get out of the equipment?
At, at the end of their life?
Yeah.
So with firearms, oftentimes that turns into a trade-in to reduce the cost, the, for the new firearms. So they go back through a dealer, which is important to us. I don't know about night vision tasers, that kind of thing. Would you speak to that, Chief?
I mean, this goes for like the breathing apparatus at the, for like, I'm just wondering if there's a cost, if there's a net cost to us or if there's a benefit sort of across the board? Because there's some stuffs that we would have to probably safely dispose of in a, in a manner that probably incurs a cost. And there's probably other stuff like you were saying that we get a trade-in value. I'm just curious where we stand.
Yeah.
For most police equipment of this, of this sort, we have a window that we look at for longevity. Most of the time, we're able to achieve pretty good longevity windows for certain pieces of equipment. Firearms are items that can generally last a pretty good amount of time. And some of that depends on wear and tear internally. And when we go out to RFP and go out to bid for these items, we would ask that the dealers that submit bids also give us trade-in allowances for whatever we had that we're updating in that maybe a 10 to 15-year window. So then they would inspect what we would be trading in. Usually they ask for some pictures and then they give us a bulb, an estimate of what they would give us for a trade allowance towards a new expenditure. But we would do that with any, anything that's not kind of a consumable item, we would get a trade-in allowance for it. From, from all bidders, everyone who bids on, on the new item.
Is there anything that incurs a cost to the town for disposal?
We have never run into that, to my knowledge. The dealers, if they do something that incurs a cost, they do not disclose it to us. So I don't believe so. I've never had that brought up.
And I would just pipe in and add that this is really one of the first ventures into what may be, what I'll phrase, alternative equipment, right, that may down the road encounter some of the questions that you're asking. But historically, what we've replaced through the capital plan and what we've purchased through the department has been of such nature that there would be a trade-in allowed.
So I would say, like a bulletproof vest, Chief, what do you do when it hits five years and we're not allowed to use those anymore?
So, yeah, that's actually a good question. So we actually have some partnerships that we've had historically where we will send those vests to areas of the country who, who maybe don't have a supportive town or council or citizenry. And these items are, would be donated in a nutshell.
As is, where is, with no warranty?
Yeah.
No guarantee that it will actually stop a bullet.
Yeah, I think 10 years ago, we sent them to England and they were shipped over for their use and we had a partnership with the postal service and it was no cost to the town. But they accepted the, the used equipment in that manner. That's, that's what we try to do. With the last, I think the last time we did this, it was done fairly locally, maybe somewhere in a southern state, I believe. PD, town south. Yeah.
I have a question for the Chief. Chief, given the profile and position of the National Administration and the pursuit of potentially electric vehicles somewhere in our fleet of public safety, are we at a point where I should just kind of put down that dream, like we're just not gonna get there?
No, it's something that we constantly evaluate. I have a chance to do some, about every other year, I'll attend a national convention where we get to talk to all the trades and the vendors who are there and we can kind of see and put hands on the latest, greatest in technology. So it's something that we, we read up on and we take the pulse of and we're always looking at. But it's something that's, it's on our list of things to look at whenever we look at vehicles.
And I know our practice is that frontline, I'm not sure what the vocabulary is, but frontline primary service vehicles get handed down to another tier that are in less use, let's say, less hours per day and then eventually, you know, are available for a trade-in on the purchase of a new one. So that's great that we're getting as much out of those vehicles as possible. When we find one of those retired frontline vehicles that still has some use in it or, I'm, I'm wondering, is there a place where we could try one of those secondary tier? And I don't know what the, again, I don't know what the vocabulary is. You've outlined it in the memo here as the lieutenant detectives and alternative response. Is there a place where we could try a, an electric vehicle in one of those pools?
I, yeah, I think it's possible for, to implement one in that secondary role. We actually just missed out on a, kind of a grant with CMP in some municipalities that we had looked into, but we were a little late. we had looked into, but we were a little late to the table on that. But it's something where some of the EV companies and the electrical utilities were kind of putting up some money to see if they could encourage municipalities to kind of look into, it was kind of a package where they wanted you to install some chargers and, and, in return, they would give you good allowances toward the purchase of EVs locally.
Yeah.
So if that, if we are fortunate enough to maybe get included on the second round of that, that's definitely something, we're actively looking into that.
Better incentives come back.
Yeah, we had, I had a good meeting with an administrator south of us and
Great.
We're kind of borrowing their matrix that they used and we're hoping to get in on another round of that.
Yeah, it's a anecdotal and totally unimportant point, but the responsiveness of an electric vehicle in a high-speed pursuit is like no other.
Oh, yeah.
So, and if we can manage the, the ability to keep them fully charged, then they should be plenty adequate to hold up for most duty, not every, not every single slot.
Yeah, I think in that role, to your point, I think in that role, it's something where it would, in that environment, it'd be much easier to manage that.
Yeah.
When it's a little more of a standard workday.
Sure.
And when that day comes, I'd love to see the criteria for, that you have, that the police department has for an EV. It would be, it would
Oh, before we make the purchase? I mean, before we bring it forward?
Yeah. I mean, miles and storage capacity and so forth.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Be really interesting.
I've got some fire questions. For the air packs and breathing apparatus, again, a couple of years ago, I think it was three years ago, we spent $137,000 on breathing apparatus and now there's another $120,000 in this year. Is that a recurring thing every three years? We need to spend that kind of money?
No, I, I would have to look back for the exact usage. There, there was a round, I believe that was done, but there was also, I believe that was just the bottles, just the physical bottles, whereas what we're asking, and I'm going to call Chief to make sure I'm saying it correctly, because like Counselor Egan, sometimes the, the language is not there for me. But I believe the one a few years ago was just the physical bottles and then this is like the apparatus components and holders. But I may have the language incorrect. If you wanted to maybe correct me?
Good evening, thank you. Yes, I believe approximately three years ago, again, prior to my administration here, we did purchase brand-new bottles. So they are in great condition. They, every three years, the makeup, the composite, how they're built, every three years, they have to be hydro-tested. So they basically take the valve out, they fill them with water, they pressurize them, and then they're dried, filled, and, and marked as in service for another three years. So the bottles are in great shape. What we had found this past fall, when we did the flow testing of the actual air packs, which is a yearly process that we, that we do, our air packs currently are 16 years old. The company that we purchased them through Scott Air Pack, the Scott brand, they are, they're repaired in Winthrop, Maine. They came in with a mobile unit, they did most all of the testing in-house, and we had 11 air packs that essentially were out of service, not repairable in the van, if you will, brought back to the shop. And at that point, what, what was brought to my attention is that there are state, federal standards, NFPA and, and things like that, OSHA has a piece in it. But what the company actually looks at is a three, an iteration of like three upgrades, the components that, that are in there, that, that out of the lifespan of the air pack, there's three upgrades that they can do. All of ours have reached that, essentially. There's no warranty left on them as well because of the age, so everything that we're doing to fix them is essentially out-of-pocket cost to, to the town, so.
So it's not, the bottles are fine, this is for the apparatus that connects to the bottles?
As Jessica said perfectly, the pack, the actual backpack that we wear that holds the bottle, the high pressure, the regulator that we use that connects to our, to the mask that we wear, all of those components basically are the other piece of it. The, the cylinders themselves are great, it's just now, it's, it's the rest of it, the, you know, that, that we wear and use for our safety.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you explain the hazardous remediation, the PFAS?
Ah, yes, that is where we have to pay to get rid of PFAS foam.
So what, but like, it's not like there's a spill behind the building, like what are we talking about?
No, this is actual contained PFAS foam and this, the options provided to us were either pay to have a company like Clean Harbors pick it up, take it to wherever they take it and do whatever they do to it. Or the second option was much cheaper, but that was to put it on a barge and send it to a developing nation, which I didn't think the town council would be cool with.
I thought you were going to say to your neighboring community.
Well, we can barge from here, that's true.
And then just to comment, the next item on that, the project says vehicle equipment and replacement, but I think it, it's, it talks about in the description Knox boxes. Is that, is there a title issue there?
Nope, it's just the, the boxes are meant to go in the apparatus, which is why it's under the
Got it.
Vehicle equipment, you know, repair line, just because there'll be additions to our apparatus and our fleet.
Great.
So if I could just touch on that, because this is one of the things that Chief Bernard brings to us with his wealth of knowledge, and it mirrors what I've done in, in my former community as well. But the Knox box, there's a key that fits all the Knox boxes. It's a very valuable key. And it's really important that it's under lock and key. Knox box keys, Knox, the boxes that are designed to hold those actually have a mechanism to ensure we know who has last taken it out, so that we have a way of tracking it down. The other place that some of these are going to go are going to be in ambulances for the narcotics box key, which is the same idea. It gives it a much higher level of security, so there's not one key floating around, so.
I just have a curiosity question for the Chief. Do we have pretty good uptake in commercial building owners, particularly with residential properties, of having a Knox box?
Yes, absolutely. Most all of the inspections that I've done in, in my short time here, all of the buildings that I've been to, LL Bean's has been fantastic with all of their facilities and buildings that they have in town, all have the actual steel Knox box located on the building. And we're, we're getting better about businesses, change, change of ownership, change of administration within companies. A lot of times, business owners will change keys and not realize that now we don't have access to the building because our keys are obsolete that are in the Knox box. So we're, we're really trying very diligently to, to get all of those updated as well. But as far as the town as a whole, with the, the ordinances and whatnot that we have, most all businesses have, have been incredibly good.
They are real lifesavers.
Yes.
I got to witness that firsthand.
Absolutely. The recommendation that I make, for instance, I've been dealing with the, a couple of businesses right on Main Street right now that have been remodeled, is what we advocate is, is a business card from the owner of the property. Give us your cell phone number if you don't have that. Alarm codes and whatnot are very helpful at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning when we're there for nuisance fire alarms or, or whatever. And it gives us the opportunity to, to be able to go in, reset those systems, and we have the information right there on the card that we're not trying to go back through our dispatch center to try to find information. And again, people take vacations and they're, they're not available, so that's incredibly helpful at that time.
Glad to hear that.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I have a rescue question. I'm looking around because I'm not sure if it's really a question for, for you or the Chief or for Sophie. But the, for the ambulance, how do we know we have the right number of ambulances? And is this likely to be impacted by the regional study that we're about to undertake? And should we, is it worth waiting a year? Or should we, do we need to buy this one this year?
So I'm going to take a stab at this and I'm going to give the Chief free rein to just jump in and tell me I'm wrong. The, the issue we have, Dan, is that ambulances are increasing exponentially in cost and they're taking years and years and years. So what we have is a deal similar to what we had with the ladder truck, where this is a demo that we can get very quickly and at a lesser cost than the new ones would be. I would say that lettering a new, a new ambulance, this one would be white, which would meet with the white, is not a deal breaker for people getting it. So if down the line, we decided we were going to go down to two to get rid of one ambulance, would not, I don't know that we would lose a lot in doing that, to be quite honest, given how expensive they are and how well the crew is maintaining all of the equipment in the fire department these days.
So if we get it now, it would likely retain its value pretty well over the next few years in case we do need to downsize?
Yep.
But, but as of today, we think three is the right number and we think we need to replace this one?
As of today, the Chief is very adamant that this is the right number. And I have a lot of faith in the Chief. I still am talking with him and we're still looking at, which is part of the reason we're looking for an outside look. Is that fair, Chief?
Yes, absolutely. We've, Sophie and I have had several conversations about this and reducing the number of ambulances in an effort to save money. I feel as though the difficulty in that is that we have back-to-back, as we call them back-to-back calls, where we're going two different sections of town on ambulance calls, a third ambulance call comes in. And with the staffing model that we have currently, that means the deputy chief and myself are actually handling that third call. When we do the special events in town, which we do, as you know, we do a lot of them, the races, the concerts at LL Bean, and also the services that we provide to the town of Pownell as well for providing their EMS services, the, the three ambulances are, are important at this point.
I guess I was asking if it was right that we had a difference of opinion and we were working through for a, for a tiebreaker, not, not the pitch.
Who's else on that?
Actually, the new ambulance is actually less money than we paid for the other new amb, two new ambulances as well, yes. So we currently have now two, the two new frontline ambulances that are white are four-wheel-drive ambulances. They're, they're truck-chassied ambulances. So that gives us the opportunity in the wintertime, obviously, to have that extra sense of security that we're not going to get stuck and can get us, us and the patient to the hospital. The new ambulance that we're going to, we're looking to purchase is a gas ambulance and it's, it's just a, it's a standard. It'll, it'll essentially match the same yellow ambulance that we have now, that same chassis. But again, that chassis costs less money, it's not diesel, it's not the four-wheel-drive truck chassis as well. So we are actually saving money with this, with this ambulance, as well as buying a demo unit that we will have in, in about a year's time, if, if approved.
How often does that happen, that all three ambulances are out at the same time, roughly?
Quite a bit. I could actually get you some data as far as actual numbers, but on a daily basis, during the day, we seem to be busier, obviously with, you know, more people in town, you know, the, the nursing homes are bustling and, and whatnot. So we do generally find more of the multiple, the multiple calls during the daytime. Likewise, if we get out to 295, if we have an accident, you know, with more patients out there with multiple vehicles, then obviously having three ambulances allows us the opportunity to go out and handle that as well.
So is that, that's data you could, you could get us? I'd be very interested in seeing that as well. That's just good to know, how often the three ambulances are out.
I would be happy to get you that information.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Could I just ask, Chief, while you're right there and we're talking about ambulance data, if you could estimate, oh, now, but also if you could get us the data, when you have ambulances that are responding, the proportion of the time that they are transporting to Portland versus transporting to Brunswick, is that, would you guess, or would you want to look at that?
To be honest with you, when I first started here, I, I kind of struggled with that as well, thinking, you know, going to Portland was further than going to Midcoast Hospital in Brunswick and, and outside of Cook's Corner. To be honest with you, the mileage is, is almost identical. So as far as wear and tear or where we transport to, you know, with those vehicles, we really truly are right in the middle. So whether we go to Midcoast or we go to Main Medical Center or Mercy Hospital in Portland, we truly, the numbers are about the same. Yeah.
Okay.
Mileage-wise.
And I guess part of why I'm asking the question, not just, is not just mileage, but also the timing of when is that ambulance back for the next call?
Right. We, our turnover's about an, about an hour for a typical, a typical ambulance call that we do currently. Again, whether it's in, in either community, Portland or Brunswick, about an hour turnaround, obviously, given the time of day in Brunswick with BIW traffic in the afternoon, that kind of stuff, you know, that obviously factors into it. And then likewise, you have your rush hour traffic in Portland. But conventionally, most every call that we go on, unless it's severe, and if our crews have to finish a report in order, for instance, for us to get narcotics for the call that we were on, we have to finish the report and physically give them the documentation in order to get those narcotics. That takes longer because they, you know, the crew is at the hospital finishing their documents. Yeah.
Any other questions for Jessica or our Chiefs? Are we?
Can I make a motion that we adjourn?
I will entertain that motion.
I thought you were just asking if you can make the motion.
Yes, yes.
Make the motion.
I will entertain that.
Two seconds.
Dan? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So now that you're adjourned, both our